15th, 2022 Meeting Advise Authority to Order. Announcement, welcome especially new Patent Township residents to the Patent Township Community, a place for all. One other announcement is the official remodeling of Chick-fil-A at 1938 North Atherton Street. They will be closing tomorrow, June 16th, at 2:00 P.M. We look forward to the new renovations and to continue working with Chick-fil-A in securing a safe and successful venture with Patent Township Community. We would also like to congratulate Councilwoman Dr. Delaney Kuhnus- Kuhn- I keep-
Krishna Kuhnus-
Krishna Kuhnus, who was appointed to State College Borough Council. Congratulations. As you are able, please rise and join us in the book and paper.
Our congratulations to the right of the United States of America and its universal republic for which it stands, on nation under all, universal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is additions to the posted agenda. Is there any item that the supervisors would like to add to the posted agenda at this Seeing none, moving on. Public comments. Residents, taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature on the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Please be respectful and defer from using any profanity, derogatory, or any offensive language, abbreviation, or gestures during the meeting. Respect is always given by this board and expect the same. Are there any public comments, or limited to five minutes? Are there any public comments at this time? Okay, moving on. We would like to change the agenda just for a minute. We're moving on administration. The request for the resolution to support House Bill 2596. Doug, would you like to?
Sure. I'll wait till Alex gets it up on the screen. Page nine, Alex. So State Representative Scott Conklin is with us tonight. He's asked the board to consider adopting a resolution supporting legislation that he has co-sponsored with several others to guarantee the point of the legislation is guarantee that any person convicted of domestic violence shall be ineligible to serve in the General Assembly or of holding any office of trust or profit in this Commonwealth. The Center County Commissioners had passed a resolution in this nature back in April of 2022. A copy of that was provided as an example, and then also the bill itself, House Bill 2596. We do have Representative Conklin with us. He'd like to address the board now would be the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you, Chair. And most of all, I'm going to thank the supervisors. You know, it's always nice coming home. As a legislator, having all Patent Township as my district originally, it's nice to have it back to where I believe it belongs. But when, you know, when you come in, you always get nostalgic because as I'm coming in, you know, growing up here when Route 322 was Atherton Street was the main road, the only businesses were the drive-in movie theater that many people may not know existed, Kentucky Fried Chicken. And the reason I bring that up is because what the supervisors of Patent Township have done historically is understand not only the needs of the public for growth, but you've understood the needs of sustainability of the family. And that you all need to be complimented for because it's absolutely breathtaking when you go back and your mind can go back many, many years and remember how well you've done growth in this area. I want to thank you for that. And that brings me to why I'm doing this bill. A lot of folks ask, why would I be doing a bill like this? Why am I so tenacious in trying to get the word out? You owe it of friends you no longer have. For myself, and I've told this story a few times, I grew up in a little town called Chester Hill. And in that little town where the, now the school's gone, you could stand and there were three homes. There was the Bailey Home, the Hollis Home, and the Raymond House. And I spent most of my life, they're all childhood friends of mine, spent most of my life with the Raymond family. All these individuals have lost their life to violence. And the latest one was a young lady by the name of Tracy Raymond, who was in a domestic, was in a bad situation with an individual who had tried to kill her on occasions and went to her job, took her life, and then took his own life. And since that had happened, trying to get legislation passed isn't always easy within the state of Pennsylvania. But this piece of legislation, the reason we're traveling across the state, the reason we're asking for people to recognize it, is that I think it's so important to understand how domestic violence affects lives. I can tell you a friend of mine, his son got in a bad relationship, took the life of his girlfriend and her mother. And that young man's family has been affected by it. I can tell you my personal friends who I grew up with have been affected by it. And all what I'm doing is that when you look at the statistics, I'm not going to get into one out of four, one out of seven. But the biggest statistic that we don't talk about is how is the large number of cases that the victim never presses charges? Even though those individuals were violent and even though they've hurt themselves, they've hurt the people they love and others, they still do not push forward with it. So what we're doing is that this piece of legislation, we want it passed, we want to understand how important this is, we want to understand that these types of acts cannot be tolerated in society. But most of all, we want to make people aware what's going on because many times it all happens behind closed doors. And that's why we're going out to each municipality. Newspapers across the state have endorsed the bill. We're just going out trying to make this so open that people understand. And with that, I have a few other people that would like to speak if that's okay, Madam Chair.
Fine.
I'd like to introduce a young man, Josh Portney, to come up and board. Josh.
Thank you, Chairman Conklin. Thank you, Patent Township Board Supervisors. This bill addresses head-on a problem that some victims of domestic violence, victims of domestic violence, domestic abuse face. Seeing their own abusers get ahead in society while they're kind of left in the shadows and their abusers have evaded real penalty or real punishment. Over a recent five-year period, according to research from Fox Rothschild LLP, a law firm in Montgomery County, less than half of domestic violence abuse cases actually proceed to a full trial beyond their preliminary hearings. This is partially due to the fact that in 88% of those cases, the judge just simply issued a PFA or a temporary restraining order and it didn't proceed to full trial. Another reason is that 20% of those cases in the five-year period, as studied by the law firm in Pennsylvania, had the petitioner, the victim in this case, withdraw before it got to the preliminary hearing for fear of what could happen if it did have to be aired in court. Oftentimes, victims of domestic abuse cannot get true justice because of the facts that I just laid out. And their abuser can pretty much remain in society with their records largely unscathed. Knowing that domestic violence abuse touches nearly one in four women and one in seven men throughout their lives, this is a substantial problem. And I'm really glad that Representative Conklin, my boss, introduced a bill to prevent these abusers from serving in government while their victims just hide in the shadows. So to further explain this bill and answer any questions you guys may have, I'd like to introduce Nicholas Heimball, the Democratic Executive Director of the House State Government Committee, of which Representative Conklin is the Democratic Chairman. He, like me and a fellow member of the board right here, is from Montgomery County and has been a fantastic public servant since graduating from Monmouth University in 2009. He worked as Deputy Chief of Staff for then-State Representative Brendan Boyle from 2011 to 2014, managing the operations for three of his district offices and crafting legislative agenda for the representative. When Rep. Boyle was elected to Congress in 2014 in the 13th District, Nick moved with him and served as District Office Director for Congressman Boyle in the four districts throughout his very large district. Nick was a senior policy advisor, it was my actual district too. Nick was a senior policy advisor to the congressman, advising him on legislation, constituent inputs, stakeholder positions, and community goings-on across the district. In early 2019, Nick moved back to Harrisburg, where he's been using his extensive legislative experience and political know-how in his role as Democratic Executive Director for the very influential House State Government Committee. He actually, as well as Scott, just came back into town from Harrisburg, where they were on the floor helping to answer questions from the Democratic Caucus about legislation that was reported out of the State Government Committee onto a full-floor vote for a second or third consideration. So without further ado, here's Nicholas Heimball. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board, and thank you, members of the public, for attending today and hearing me speak. Often I address rooms full of legislators and explain legislation. This is the first time in many years I've actually gotten to explain it to members of the community. So thank you for having me. We have here today House Bill 2596, which Chairman Conklin behind me is the prime sponsor and the author of. In this legislation, I should kind of, before I go into it, explain that it is a constitutional amendment. And for those who aren't familiar with that process, constitutional amendments do need to pass twice through two consecutive sessions, both the House and Senate. But after that, they actually do something unique in terms of legislation. They go to voters on the next election, whether that's a primary or general, and then you, the public, get to vote on that constitutional amendment. So this is one of the few times in which the public have direct input on legislation rather than indirect input through their elected legislator. It has to be a constitutional amendment because within the state constitution is where we enshrine the requirements to hold public office in this Commonwealth. So without further ado, House Bill 2596 does amend the state constitution to restrict any individual who has been sentenced for domestic violence from holding certain legislative, executive, or judicial offices. It does consist of four separate and distinct articles. And the legislation also would require the General Assembly to define physical or sexual abuse for use in any of these four amendments should they pass that second time and go to voters. The first article would be Article II, Section 7, and that adds that physical and sexual abuse of family or household member would make you ineligible to serve in the General Assembly. Article IV, Section 5, would hold the same for anybody who wants to run for governor, lieutenant governor, or attorney general. Article V, Section 12, would hold the same, that you may not serve in office and you'd be disqualified from doing so for any individual who has physically or sexually abused a family or household member. You would no longer be able to become a judge, a justice, a peace officer, which would be an officer of the law. And Article VI, Section 2, creates an eligibility of civil officers to declare that no person, sorry, an eligibility for civil officers to declare that no person who has been sentenced for physically or sexually assaulting a family member may serve in that role as a civil officer. And you may not say that you have never been sentenced and then serve. There's additional penalties if you do that. Legislation is relatively straightforward and has been endorsed by a large number of social groups in the state of Pennsylvania. As I said, the constitutional election process, amendment process, is not the easiest. It does have to pass twice and then go to the public for a vote. But this legislation, I would consider to be relatively non-controversial in that I think 99.999% of Pennsylvanians would agree that we don't want domestic abusers serving in public office in this Commonwealth. So with that, I'm happy to take questions if you have, members of the board.
Is there any questions from any of the supervisor witnesses?
Yeah, so I haven't, never questions. So I'm just trying to understand the whole process.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, it also kind of, so this thing kind of conflicts with my sense of an incarceration system that is about reformative justice. And so there's, I don't understand the degree of seriousness of the violence, if it's specified or not, and is there any chance that there's any rehabilitation?
Sure. So it would involve convictions. So if convicted of one of those crimes, you'd be ineligible to serve. But if you were subsequently, had those crimes expunged or motioned to red act because the charges were dropped, you would be eligible to serve once again.
Oh, okay. Okay. And, great, okay, thank you. That's important. So, yes, so the thing that's, another thing that stood out to me was, and you probably have a logical answer to this. So I consider it just as pernicious emotional damage, which is a little bit harder to quantify or qualify, whatever, than, it seems like the domestic violence is limited only to, well, domestic, within the household. So why doesn't it not include violations that are of a non-domestic setting? You know, it could be a caregiver, it could be a neighbor.
So-
It'd just get a little bit messy after that.
That's a good question. And we often talk about the boyfriend loophole in Pennsylvania and how it's really difficult for individuals who may not be married to somebody but living with them to deal with domestic violence issues. But that's why we leave the legislation with the requirement that the General Assembly actually define physical and sexual abuse. Because to put it in the state constitution, you're insuring something in the constitution, you don't want to be overly specific because that is very permanent. It cannot be changed. If the definitions in Title 18 were to change, the constitution can't change with it. So by having the General Assembly set that, it's able to change with changing laws over time. So the constitution being non-prescribed and then the General Assembly being extra-specific gives a lot more flexibility for future generations to deal with changing laws.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense then. Okay. So, and, so also sadly, I'm just, I'm trying to get my head around, this is certainly bringing awareness to a very serious issue. And it doesn't have to do everything, but I don't see how this prevents additional domestic violence. Or is that not the purpose of this? It is simply raising awareness, which is of course also-
In this case, I mean, it would be beyond the scope of the legislation to prevent additional domestic violence, but there's a lot of really good legislation in the House that would do so. Not necessarily constitutional amendments, but legislation offered by many of the chairman's Democratic colleagues and by members across the aisle as well. But for the state constitution specifically, I'm not sure what one would put in there to prevent it. But we do often add, you know, different sentencing to Title 18 and increase that sentencing in order to add some additional level of concern for anybody looking to do it. But a lot of times, the problem with domestic violence is it's not necessarily something that they're thinking through at the time, right? They're obviously thinking about the penalties, thinking about what the consequences will be. So it can be really difficult for them, you know, to put those penalties in place that would actually prevent someone from committing domestic violence. Often, we're really penalizing them after the fact and hoping those penalties after the fact prevent that happening again in the future, which is a shame and I do wish it were different. But in this instance, because it's a state constitutional amendment for running for office, kind of starting at a macro level, right? We kind of look to our leaders when we're looking for proper social norms and behaviors. And if our leaders are themselves domestic abusers and are allowed to hold office despite those convictions, I think it probably sets the wrong example for anybody else who might be actually thinking through the steps to do the same.
Okay. Awesome. And I have one other question.
Sure.
So, and this again is my understanding flaw. So what is to stop somebody down the road from adding to this, adding another restriction to somebody holding office, so that it then becomes sort of this laundry list of infractions that would prevent somebody from holding office? Is there a way of casting a broader net that again would allow that flexibility but still bring attention to these egregious crimes?
Sure. That is kind of why we point to having the General Assembly set the definitions because the state constitution is weirdly prescriptive when it comes to conditions in which you would not be eligible to serve in office. So we have to be slightly prescriptive in terms of the umbrella in which we're casting in the state constitution. But there could be future constitutional amendments that add additional categories that aren't already there. But currently, I mean, already if you have a felony, you can't serve. So this would be in addition to that, right? This would be if it's below felony class conviction, it would capture that. But I think you'd have to be a little careful about how broad you throw that net because there's a lot of non-felony convictions that probably shouldn't disqualify you for running for office. So again, I do think there's always room to keep moving forward with future improvements.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that.
Supervisor, we're brought in.
Thank you for letting me take up all the time.
Oh, well, this is your space too. So thank you for this presentation. Two things that come to mind. One, what is the potential blowback or implications of this that, yeah, you might receive?
Sure. I mean, I don't think there'd be much blowback per se, but certainly if it were to pass and you had people currently serving in office, they would be ineligible to run for reelection and I could see those people being quite upset. And certainly their political party may be upset if they hold a vulnerable seat. So that you could consider to be political blowback, I suppose. But I think there's pretty unanimous support around not wanting convicted domestic abusers serving in office, so I don't think there'd be a lot of pushback on that. Maybe something political, but hard to speculate.
Okay. And just relatedly, this just got brought up for me. When y'all bring this to the floor, I don't really understand the process, but would this be like a standalone thing that you're voting on or would this be grouped into other bills?
It's a very good question. And usually constitutional amendments like this one, you want to pass on their own as their own bill. But oftentimes, after constitutional amendments will pass toward the end of session, you'll see an omnibus bill, and I actually expect that we'll see one soon in the State House, where prior constitutional amendments that already passed on their own will all be amended into one constitutional amendment and that will be passed finally and sent to the Senate. That way, rather than having to have the Senate concur in a bunch of individual bills, they can concur in one bill with each of the constitutional amendments. So I would be looking for something like that. Hopefully that answers your question.
That does. And then the second question I had. I don't want you outing people, but I'm just curious to know, are there numbers for individuals right now currently serving in the Commonwealth that would fall under this?
I don't have specific numbers on that. The impression I was given when I asked the office attorney was that they believed there were, but that they couldn't speak on it specifics. And so I don't know what that number is and the fact that that information is not in the public domain should probably concern everybody, so.
I think that might also be something down the road helpful to just create some transparency that if there are individuals currently serving or whatever, that we have access as the public to actually see that for accountability purposes.
And often it does fall to the press to kind of highlight and illuminate those instances and that's a heavy burden for the press to bear. It's very difficult to do that sort of investigative reporting when you have, you know, further decreased newsrooms every year with budget cuts and everything, so.
So maybe a recommendation as y'all are trying to champion this, obviously those in government employees maybe not be able to root these individuals out and provide a specific number, but maybe some third-party individuals who can do some digging because I think that just might add more weight and support to like, oh, this is an actual problem.
Yeah.
Here are the faces and-
Absolutely. I mean, we know that they exist, but getting names, that's a different issue. If this were to pass though, we'd immediately know who they were because they would no longer be eligible to run for office and that information would have to come out as part of that. So that would be the one highlight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for our township manager. Doug, this type of resolution supporting legislation, I presume this board supervisors has in the past, passed such resolutions supporting other legislation?
Yes, we have. I couldn't tell you anything specifically. It's probably been a couple, three years, but I can research that.
So we're not setting a precedent because it's already been done?
It's up to each individual body, board, whether they want to do these things or not. I think some people are concerned that, are you speaking for the five, four or five members of the board or are you speaking for the whole, everybody in the community? I think you need to define that in your mind, just to make sure that you understand what you're doing.
Yeah, we could have asked our county commissioners the same question, and are they representing the three of themselves or are they representing Center County when they pass this resolution? when they pass this resolution?
So, Madam Chair, if I could, I have a quick, Dan, just a remark, that we did recently pass a resolution supporting federal legislation, a bill before the House, the cabin trade with car emissions, so if that's a precedent, it's there.
My questions were more, you know, procedural. Personally, I'm in favor of us passing such a resolution, creating and passing a resolution. Obviously, we can't do that tonight, because we don't have a written resolution to vote on, but if the other members of the board are agreeable, I think we ought to ask our manager to compose such a resolution.
I would like to hold off, I would like to speak on this. I have a question. We talked about records that have been expunged, is that in your, in your bill as well?
No, it doesn't need to be, because it would involve a criminal conviction being the barrier, so you no longer have a conviction once it's been expunged, it's like it's never happened, as far as the criminal justice system is concerned, so that would immediately make you eligible again, you don't have to spell it out specifically.
I have a question on, I'm in support, on one hand, of knowing individuals who have been abused, but also, I've also been in the position to see both sides.
I understand.
Especially of low-income and people of color, about having judgments cleared and not cleared, and although this is a protection bill, I'm also looking at, down the line, people that made mistakes, and that have turned their lives around, and is this pigeon holding them from a past in moving to doing great things? I don't know about other colleagues from other municipalities, but I do know we do have a colleague who was incarcerated, but is an outstanding official, outstanding individual, who turned their life around.
I could speak to that, actually, I mean, maybe getting a little personal, I guess, but I was actually raised by a Philadelphia civil rights attorney, who runs the police transparency project out of Philadelphia, and her primary practice is criminal civil rights and police misconduct, mostly criminal civil rights. So I had it in the back of my head, making sure that if they did have the expungement or motion to redact in the future, that I wanted to make sure that they would be eligible to serve again. Obviously, that information will already have been out there, but so would the actual conviction, because that becomes public record, but their expungement would also subsequently be out there, and public knowledge in the public domain. So when their name comes up on Google, you'd see that they had a conviction and they had an expungement, whether the expungement was due to, conviction being overturned, or other circumstances, it would be there. And I do think that's very important, some of the best people I know, some of the best legislative staff I know, served time in prison, subsequently were released, rehabilitated, and have gone on to do wonderful things with their lives. I used to go visit a gentleman in greater prison regularly, Charles Diggs, who was in there since he was 17 years old as an accessory to an armed robbery, life in prison as an accessory, and he was in eighty. One of the best men I've ever known, certainly absolutely rehabilitated by our criminal justice system, which isn't always the case, and somebody who, if he were released, he'd make a great public servant. I would certainly want someone like that to have the opportunity to serve, and it would be, I would never put pen to paper and make legislation that would prevent that, so.
I thank you. I don't want to vote on this yet, because we are missing one of our board members, and it should be unanimous as we move forward. So if it is okay with the board, I would like to wait until we have full board.
So back to, back to Dan's board, I'm sorry.
Hold on, hold on, it's gone. Is that okay with the board?
We could still draft a resolution for us to consider next month.
Okay.
And I think Supervisor Abrams would probably be back in town
Okay.
A month from now.
Is that okay with the rest of the board, that we can draft it?
So can I make a motion?
Hold on, I would like, before we make a motion, I would like for our solicitor to review it, to make sure all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted.
Yeah, if I may, at this point, I would just take the language from the county commissioners, change what's appropriate to recognize Patton Township, and if you'd like, I can run that by the solicitor.
I would like that very much, so before we move, before this board moves forward, we want such an important, proper resolution. I don't want anything moving forward without this board having our solicitor read through it, so we won't be caught behind the eight ball. So Doug, if you can move that forward, I really would appreciate it. Thank you all for your time in bringing this, and we will have it on our next agenda.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a question, so we didn't need to make a motion to...
No, you don't need to make a motion, I mean, by consensus of the board, everyone agreed, we're not taking any official action, there'll be a draft motion on the agenda for a draft resolution on the agenda, that would take a motion to approve at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, moving next, next on the agenda, agenda is the presentation of public hearing, hours of play for Green Hollow pickleball courts in township. Doug, you'd like to give us an update on that?
Yes, Pam, at our last meeting on May 25th, the board received comments from two pickleball players, asking the board if they would consider changing the established hours of play. Those hours of play were approved by the board back in September of last year, and then they were extended in February. The current hours of play are 11 to 5 p.m. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and there are no hours of play for pickleball on Wednesday and Fridays, this just, this only concerns the pickleball courts in Green Hollow Park. We did send out a notice via email to the list that we had established or put together last year, when we were having several conversations about pickleball. We have gotten a few comments from interested folks, those were included as items 3A.2, and then one additional one came in over in the last few days as item 3A.4. We do have a contractor lined up to convert the two tennis courts at Burnell Road Park into six pickleball courts, they tell us they are scheduled to start in mid-July. I'll be honest, they told us earlier, they told us several months ago, they were going to start at the beginning of June, we're unhappy with them, but this is very specialized work, so we're, there are very few contractors in the state that do this, we have told these contractors they need to finish the work by August 8th or refund all our money. So we anticipate them still starting mid-July, and the works anticipate to take a couple weeks. At that, I'd recommend that the board see what comments are the public would like to make, if you are looking for a recommendation from me, I can provide that now or later.
Open it up to the public. Any public comment at this time?
Yeah, take your mic. Yep, there you go.
Thank you, Dan.
Well, you all know me, Stephen Garcia, I live on Park Forest Avenue, 150 feet away from the pickleball courts that the township decided to put there. I come to you today because I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed in my elected officials to allow this nuisance to continue on. You've already addressed the fact that you know that it shouldn't have been put there, you say that it wouldn't have been put there if you knew what, what noise it would cause, you say that you did it out of being naive, to so many reasons. You've also done a noise study. Oddly enough, you never told, you never had anyone tell us about that noise study, but we, the neighbors, actually did some reviews, and it shows that it is unreasonable noise. It's, it's, it's above what the World Health Organization calls unreasonable. And, you know, talking about hours now, seriously? You guys know it shouldn't be there, you know? There's ordinance for unreasonable noise, that ordinance was adopted a year prior to these courts being put in. I don't know if you guys know how to write and read regulation very well, it's what I do as a profession, it pretty much points out exactly what pickleball is, the frequency, the repetition, it's exactly what it is. And it also says, it's, it's, it's not, that the township shouldn't allow these things, it's not just the person causing the noise, it's the person allowing it, and you know very well that you're allowing it, but you're still continuing on doing it. And, you know, there might be some folks that say, hey, it's only a couple of neighbors, does that matter? There's so many more pickleballers, it's only a couple of neighbors, why does it matter? It matters because the small voice matters, just like when this pickleball court went in, literally, I live 150 feet away from the park, I love that park, but I could, I had the hardest time getting into it, because it's not ADA accessible. Every single hill going into it is above the curb, you can't get to every, every piece of the park because there's no path. I reached out to Susan Wheeler about this, she said, oh, no, Sierra's ADA accessible, no, it's not, it's even worse. So then I reached out to Doug Erickson and to the supervisors, hey, you guys are breaking DOJ law, because there's a law that says when you alter a facility in a park after, I think it's 2008, that entire park needs to be modified and ADA accessible. Mr. Erickson kept on saying, no, it's not a pickle, no, it's not a pickle. Finally, I guess he spoke to the solicitor or something, and said, oh, yeah, we were wrong, oh, this is the contractor's fault for not catching this. I've got a background in soil engineering and urban planning, this is simple, you know, this is bad planning. I also reached out, I did a write-to-note request to get information on what type of background information went into putting that park, spending those funds in Green Hollow, nothing happened. No research about noise studies, no research about traffic, no research about parking patterns, nothing. I mean, it's green hollow, what's a hollow? It's a natural amplifying setting. The courts, the tennis courts, tennis is actually not that loud, there were two tennis courts, they went opposite directions of where people lived. Then the Patton Township decided that they were going to put four pickleball courts that shoot their direction of the closest houses. I don't know if you know what pickleball is, should listen to it, you should look at all the different things that are online right now, all the complaints, all the lawsuits. And that being said, I've been working with a, with an attorney on this, and I'm prepared to file a lawsuit for continuing, continuing this, this nuisance, because that's what the township is doing. I mean, the attorney's actually offering to do a pro bono as well, because it's just that simple. Read, read the regulations. I'm being interrupted, I work from home, during the pandemic, my son went to school in our basement, 150 feet. I still deal with it, luckily, he's not in school, and he's not at home anymore, but my livelihood is also being affected by this. I work for the federal government, my office in my, in my, my house is my approved remote workspace. I hear tic-tac, 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 and then if I open the windows, tic-tac, tic, yay, tic-tac. Can you imagine that outside right here? Can you imagine that outside of your home, outside of your office? I don't want my livelihood to be affected by this. I'm, you know, talking about these hours, seriously, I mean, does that change anything? One minute of this is a violation.
Mr. Garcia, you have sixty seconds on that.
That's it, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Apologize.
No, no apology. Next?
Thank you so much, guys, again, for listening to me. Unlike Mr. Garcia, I'm really proud of you, and it's, nobody knows what you go through. It makes pickleball very insignificant to what I just heard earlier about the decision you have to make and all that stuff. I wasn't really planning on talking about this, but I'm gonna try to sum it, because I have five, quick five minutes here. When Penn State was opening their door for everybody, our kids used to benefit from that, and from benefited from that, when we used to take our kids, we literally benefit our own community, because when I used to take my kids to play volleyball and basketball at Penn State, who was benefit from it? Not only the kid, not only us as a family to keep him away from the street, also our township benefit from it, our school district benefit from it. When the people become a good player, the school, the middle school benefit from those kids, the high school benefit from them, they build actually a personality where they can be actually socializing with people. What we are doing right now, and I'll invite you, I'm not saying like there is no noise from pickleball, but I'll invite you to come over and be part of it, like maybe for a few hours, and the community is being built around pickleball. When I start playing pickleball, and I ask my kid to come over and play, and they say, Dad, this is an old game, just go ahead and play, enjoy it yourself, and I said, you really should try it, it is fun, like, you know, it's building community around, around everybody. They really wouldn't buy my argument, they said like, this is an old sport. The sport has changed so much right now, the people who dominate that sport, it's been the age between 20 to 30 years old. This is what we are preventing from people later on to actually have that social event. I was just there yesterday, as we were leaving, a guy and his wife are coming over to play, maybe about 10 minutes to 5:00. So we gave them head up about the 5:00 o'clock, and he said, I just left work, and he said like, where's my taxpayer going? So I told him, I said, come over to the meeting today, and he said like, oh, I work with so, and this is the phrase, which is really funny to me, is, I don't know, I mean, I come from different culture, and I look at something different, like what the benefit of the thing, like the majority benefit for everybody, and he said, I work with Republican and Democrat, I don't want to come over offend anybody. I don't see a merit to that. We teach our kid, if he sees something wrong, speak up, but here we are as an adult, we don't, we try to hide things behind the scene and resuscitate everything around it. This is a fun thing, I feel there should be more part, to be honest with you, maybe like to his point, if they have to be in a different side, you know, that's fine, but we should provide more opportunity for people. There is a lot of, if we study, I'm no doctor or anything, but if we read, there is a youth depression, what happened is from the kid that I don't have a way to go out, what they are doing right now, they are sitting in the front of their TV and playing all night long, their parents are really suffering from that, and what we are, we are not creating another avenue for them. You know, like Penn State used to create a lot of that for our kids, when they shut their door, for good reason, obviously, it prevented a lot of those people. Now we are preventing a community, they could walk literally to those parks and pick up and play. Some people don't have the means to drive all the way where the airport is, it is a good, it is a good social thing, I really think you should look into it. I have no, actually, when I was listening about them, about the domestic violence, and you brought an awesome and awesome subject about like different things, like I heard you, what you said, like, how are we gonna do with like somebody already have an issue? I mean, I actually, your, your job is just amazing, I'm honestly, literally proud of you, like, and how you kind of break everything down, you really do, it's not an easy job, and all what we are... And I'll do invite you to come over and listen to the noise. And the sport is revolving, it has changed so much. The paddle changed, the ball is changing. Now they are talking about the paddle gonna absorb that sound so there won't not be much noise anymore. So why do we want to waste more money to close this and create another? Look at how the sport is revolving. You know, my kids used to play baseball over there, and it truly, I'm telling you the truth, and maybe some of you do know, those tennis court were trash. And that's what the neighbor wants. I mean, if we are paying tax money, then make it a green land completely. And I think that's what the neighbor wants, seems to be. But this is a park for everybody to enjoy. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else regarding?
Somebody online has her hand raised.
All right. Brandon McDonough has his hand.
Brandon? Oh, there you go. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you to the board, thank you Chairwoman. I'm honestly having a bit of deja vu. I feel like we were here a year ago. At that time, it seemed like the board understood the issues of the neighbors around Green Hollow. It was, you know, not only to, to limit the hours of pickleball play, but to move expeditiously, to move pickleball away from the residents' houses that are too close to those courts. You know, a year has passed and, and nothing really has changed. There has been limits placed on the hours of play, but that's obviously why we're here talking tonight. You know, this isn't about the, the community of pickleball, this isn't about the availability of recreation in our township, or in our county, in our region. This is about noise, plain and simple. This is a noise that intrudes our neighbors' houses. It's audible inside the house. Thirty's, thirty hours of noise that's audible inside your house is thirty hours too many. That's the definition of unreasonable noise within the township code, is clearly audible above five decibels inside your house. You know, again, you know, I'm glad that Mr. Garcia was there in person tonight. You know, you can't tell Steve that he can only schedule work meetings on Wednesdays and Fridays because then that's when pickleball doesn't happen. That's his meeting hours for his job to make a living. That's not acceptable. You know, I just, my question is, how would the board handle a different scenario where if it was a construction permit, it was gonna create audible noise, it would be a disruption to neighbors? You know, how would you approach that situation differently? Would you allow it to be, you know, thirty hours a week indefinitely with no constraint and no end deadline? I, I don't think that that's realistic. I don't think that that's how you would approach that problem if it wasn't, you know, this issue. I, I just want to, you know, wrap up by saying one last thing and that's silence. That's what, you know, that my neighbor should have in their house. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? Alex, do you see anybody else?
No.
Okay. Closing the public comment, um, supervisors. Any supervisor would like to speak at this time? Okay, Supervisor McGruder.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hear all the feedback and, um, and I appreciate, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on your name.
Rod, how are we?
Rod, Mr. Rod. I know you had come to the last meeting and spoke about, uh, not necessarily feeling like this was a place where you, your family, you know, belonged in. And so to hear then that, you know, at least in this sphere with this sport, this, this seems like a, a space where we do feel heard and you belong and there's community, like it's, it's just wonderful to hear that. And I'm aware I have not been on this board, um, for a long time. And when this decision, I guess, was made, again, I was not here. And knowing what I know now, right, which is in a different space than what the rest of the board is in, a more privileged space because I have more information, um, I don't think I would ever, ever been in support of this being placed here. And Mr. Garcia and, uh, Mr. Brandon, sorry, um, I think I am in agreement that this comes to like a noise issue, right? And if it's in our code, um, and we're actively not following that, um, I think that's caused for pause and some reconsideration. And I, I think I agree too that us talking about extending hours or not, um, that seems like kind of secondary and not necessarily what we actually need to be talking about. So I don't, that, that's what I'll say right now. I'll have more thoughts on it, but that's just initially what I wanted to get out there before we move forward with this.
All right, Supervisor. Trevino or Whitman?
I can do that.
Do I have?
No, the comment, public comment is closed, Mr. Garcia, at this time. Supervisor Whitman.
So it, for, for those of us who were here when we made the decision, we've, um, now say, if we knew then what we know now about the noise, we, none of us would have approved it. And I, I know there were some noise, there were some surveys that went out and I probably didn't pay as much attention to them as I should have. I think, so we did through the whole noise ordinance thing and I would ask Doug to sort of clarify that, I think, or Betsy DeQuie?
I'll ask the chief to talk about it if you want to do that, but why don't you?
Well, I just, I, it's one of those, unfortunately, one of those things that's very hard to modify and, uh, most municipalities, um, have, have a very difficult time dealing with it and I, and maybe this is a point, I'll have the chief speak in a second. But the other thing I do want to say is that, um, we, there, I know Brandon, Brandon, you talked about no end in sight, I get it. It's, you know, even, even though there is a, an end in sight, we hope in mid-July, if the construction company comes through, there, there is an end in sight. The decision for the board, that board made to, to essentially say, there will be no more pickleball courts in that area after a certain date, I think was a big commitment and, and a very important one, that we did stand on the side of the neighbors and we understand. I certainly agree that the noise is egregious, whether it is supported by the ordinance or not. It is all about the noise, right? There, there is an end in sight and, and there will be no more courts, pickleball courts close to neighbors, uh, within that five, is it that 500-foot, um, distance, I believe?
You know, the relative days. Can you say August 8th?
Hold on, okay. Anyway, and then, uh, yeah, so that was, I guess I'm here to say this will end, the, the noise will end. Yes, we've been there, we were here last year and, uh, it was difficult for us because we also know that we are making, passing judgment on, on noise, uh, since it's not quantitatively defined and there are many people who believe that, um, in the buyer beware clause, if you're living next to, you know, if you're moving next to a, a public park, you should be ready to be advised of noise. I disagree to the extent that the noise from pickleball is, uh, not, to me, within the realm of noise that historically has been expected or allowed or accepted, I guess, in parks. So...
Supervisor Whitman, can we hear from?
I was gonna ask the chief if you could say a, a few words about the enforcement aspect of noise.
Yeah, sure. So, our agency, um, kind of throughout the entire process here with the pickleball noise, um, has kind of been operating under the, the, the belief, within the, the definition of unreasonable noise in our noise ordinance, the last sentence, um, says, given, given the time of day, the location and/or other relevant factors in which we're aware the sound is made. So, you know, the time of day, um, people aren't playing pickleball at three or four in the morning, um, you know, they're playing pickleball when the parks are open, um, and that's even been limited down by the board now two separate times. I believe the first time was from nine until seven, um, and now obviously from 11 to five every day except for Wednesdays and Fridays. Um, you know, the location, it's, it's a public park. It's a public park that's open to anybody to come to, um, doesn't have to be people who live just right there, there's parking, anybody can come from our community to enjoy it. And there's other recreational activities that are in that park that also create noise. There's basketball courts, so people dribble it, there's baseball fields, you know, bats and balls. So, those, those types of things, and it, we also didn't consider pickleball noise coming from a pickleball court to be unreasonable. You know, I, we've heard examples before, you know, you know, if you live next to a racetrack, you'd expect to hear racing noises or engine noises, things like that. So th- those are some of the things, um, that, some, another thing that we considered as far as the enforcement of it goes, um, the, the ordinance clearly states that it's for an individual. So, to hold the township accountable, I don't know how we, um, would accomplish that as a police department, um, specifically states that it's towards a individual who violates this by making the noise. So those are kind of the hurdles that we've had and, and some of the things that we've been operating on, um, as a, a police department. The officers have done a fantastic job, if we receive a call, somebody's there outside of the hours, they respond, they, they deal with it appropriately, make sure that the folks move on, um, and explain the, the ordinance and the hours to them. We have had about nineteen calls, uh, since the beginning of the year related to people playing outside of the hours that were allotted by the board.
So just to summarize, the definition in our regulations for noise for what's unreasonable, or if you flip it around to what's reasonable, is, is pickleball noise is coming from a pickleball court reasonable? And then our regulations and the way unreasonable is defined, that is a reasonable noise. So that's why we haven't taken any further action in terms of noise regulations for the township.
Uh, this reminds me a lot of the, uh, patent crossing controversy that the board had to deal with for, uh, over a year, I think, a year and a half, that whole process. We can't side aside everybody. You know, we went through all the public comments and, um, points of view last year when we were talking about pickleball at Green Hollow Park. And I know, I felt at that time that we, the board, were searching for compromise. And so we, we decided on, well, we can limit the amount of play at Green Hollow Park, which we did. We set the, set aside two days a week where there will be no play permitted and also reduced the, the hours of play from 11 to 5. So that was one, uh, accommodation. It wasn't a total, uh, elimination of pickleball at Green Hollow, which, uh, many residents were requesting. As far as the request, current request to remove the limitations on our, on hours of play at Green Hollow Park, uh, I'm certainly not in favor of that because we did, we did have a compromise. And, uh, part of that, the compromise we agreed to last year was, uh, convert, uh, tennis courts at Burnell Road Park to pickleball courts. So we, the, we could maintain pickleball play in our township, but remove it from the proximity of residences. Uh, I'm certainly very frustrated at the delays in getting the conversion started. Uh, because back a year ago, I was thinking, well, the, what I heard our manager say back then was whenever the weather permits, they, they, they can begin the conversion process. So I'm thinking, okay, well, when is the weather good? Mid-May or, you know, June 1st? That, and it, uh, so I'm certainly very frustrated that it hasn't already been done. We should have the conversion ready right now. And as soon as the conversion at Burnell Road Park is completed, we will close, uh, pickleball at, uh, Green Hollow Park immediately and begin a conversion back to tennis courts. So my, uh, all I'm saying now, Madam Chair, is I'm not in favor of changing the current play restrictions at Green Hollow Park and, uh, and also, I'm not in favor of closing pickleball play at Green Hollow Park until the Burnell Road conversion has been completed. I, I think we should proceed with the compromise that we came up with last year.
Okay. I agree with you there. I also, people forget, we are still in COVID. Our labor source is shorthanded. So it's kind of pushed everything back. Um, our code enforcement office is telling us about how they can't get their workers to inspect, um, labor. So it's, we're, we're really behind the eight ball here in trying to appease everyone. In having the courts done, we are really hoping that our contractor will start, um, Doug, if I'm not mistaken, mid-July, and have it done by August 8th.
That's...
It's the, I'm not gonna guarantee...
That's everybody's current understanding.
Yeah, I am not gonna give that date as a, 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 a done deal because there is no done deal. There's no done deal, we're hoping, being transparent, we're hoping it's done by August 8th. But I agree with my colleague, uh, Trevino, and I, I really am so sorry for my colleague who just walked into this and is getting hammered. Supervisor, uh, Supervisor McGruder was just elected to this board and has done his research on this. And to attack him, or as the board members, when he just got on board. I wasn't here when they put the courts in at all. But here I'm making the most important decision with this board as we move forward to appease everyone. So, I stand with my colleague Trevino not to change the, the timing and that hopefully, and I'm praying, that our contractors will get on this in July so we can move forward so the residents can have a quiet and peaceful transition. To our pickleball players, we hear you and we hope that as the sport is growing, that the other municipalities that get this sport in their neighborhood, that they do their research and they understand. And I also want to, when you make the assumption that this board doesn't know the pickleball sound selection... the other municipalities that get this sport in their neighborhood, that they do their research, and they understand. And I also want to, when you make the assumption that this board doesn't know the pickleball sound select, you don't know how many times we have been out to the courts and we heard it, we understand it. So, don't assume that this board does not do their research, because we do. We hear it, we're out there in the sun, listening. And to any issue that is brought to this board, this board continues to be diligent, respectful, and we do our homework. And to praise the staff, those that are not here and those that are here, the hard work that they do. Susan, I know you're somewhere out there, somewhere, we thank you for your hard work. And Chief, to your officers, thank you. So, without further ado, I relate to hear from my other two board members, and then we're moving forward. Supervisor Whitman, what is your position on this?
I agree with you. Well, I, yes, I do not think that we should increase or decrease the number of hours. I had a thought about the type of hours. I know that that was the request, they didn't want to play in the middle of the day, but at this point, since we're talking about a month, my suggestion is just to stick with what we have, it's not perfect for everybody. And I would also like to say that this community is very lucky, this entire center region is very lucky in that we are federally well-funded. I've read some of the descriptions of the courts in Arlington, Virginia, which is my hometown, they don't have the money to put other courts in. But we do, this township is spending a lot of money putting in more courts than we want other courts to do it, so.
Supervisor Magruder?
Yeah, so, yeah, thanks for the feedback, Madam Chair, and again, I want to make sure that I clarify that I'm not casting any aspirations at, you know, our board before I got on it, and then hindsight is 20/20. As I hear now about how our code is interpreted right now, it doesn't, it seems like I was incorrect maybe in assuming then that we were flouting, or going against whatever, you know, the code is, and it doesn't really appear based on interpretation that I was correcting that. And so, again, with the information being presented initially for this proposal before these courts were instructed, based on, again, the recommendations about, you know, distance from homes and stuff like that, again, I would have said and voted against installing But right now, it doesn't really seem like a need to stop it right now, because again, of how our code is being sort of interpreted, interpreted. So, I'm ready to take a vote on.
Doug, do we need a vote, or is it in, or we're all in agreement?
Yeah, the board has a couple options. If you take no action whatsoever, then nothing changes, so the hours as they are currently are in place. If you'd like to, if somebody wanted to make a motion to continue the hours as they currently are, the board could take action on that also.
No. You have the consensus from the board, we are not changing. Thank you.
Can I say something before I go, please?
Sorry, sir, we closed the public portion, and it's immune.
I think it's an important matter, just like the agenda before the evening.
Hold on, hold it, Doug.
Rod, the board has done taking comments, if you'd like to provide written comments, you may do that, or if you'd like to attend the next meeting.
I just want to say that I'm 127 feet away from the park, and if you get 19 to call, that's me, there isn't any.
Rod, please, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Next on the agenda is diversity, equity, and inclusion, Community Diversity Group Conference. Doug?
Just want to make a short announcement and, quote-unquote, plug the conference. If you haven't heard or you're not aware, the Community Diversity Group has a conference scheduled for next week, June 21st. Conference information, registration are available on their website through the links included in the agenda. It's a full day of hearing about diversity, and talking about diversity, and living diversity, and finding out how we can encourage more diversity. The Patent Township is a conference sponsor, and several members of the board and staff will be attending. End of my report.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is Public Safety Monthly Report. Chief Charlie?
All right, thank you very much. Very busy month of May for the police department. You'll notice we had 115 traffic stops, 22 citations, three parking tickets, 35 criminal arrests, our bike patrol rode 43 miles, had a traffic stop, and did two vacation home checks. Under department notes, a 31-year-old male was arrested for simple assault. Officers were dispatched to a township business for fight and progress. Throughout the officer's investigation, they determined that the male attacked another person by punching him in the face. A 44-year-old male was arrested for possession of methamphetamine. One of our officers on bike patrol was out and noticed a vehicle with an expired inspection sticker. He was able to stop the vehicle and found that the driver had a warrant out for his arrest. The officer took the male into custody and searched him and discovered the narcotics incident to that search from the arrest. A 38-year-old male was arrested for driving under the influence, fleeing or attempting to evade law enforcement, and hit-and-run. The male struck a illegally parked vehicle and left the scene. An officer caught up to the vehicle, and the male refused to pull over for the officer for a few miles. Eventually, he did stop, and his vehicle was severely damaged. We had 25 arrests for retail theft, that's actually up. Last month, I reported that retail thefts had really jumped up from 23 in April to 25 this month, so the loss prevention folks are still very busy in our stores, our retail stores. And then we had two arrests for driving under the influence. Our officers successfully served eight of the nine warrants that they attempted, and they conducted eight vacation home checks. A lot of folks are heading out for vacations this summer, please feel free to contact our agency, we have a form on our website as well that you can fill out. We're happy to keep an eye on your house for you while you're away, check the doors, and if there's any issues, we can notify an emergency contact for you. Feel free to reach out to us, and we'll be happy to help with that. We did have to use force during three incidents in the month of May. The first is referenced to the DUI stop that I just referenced, the hit-and-run where the individual fled from officers. Fleeing and eluding is a felony offense, so our officers did conduct a felony traffic stop once the vehicle did stop. So, as part of that, they did point their duty weapons in the direction of the driver until they were able to successfully and safely get him secured in handcuffs. There were no injuries reported by the driver or by the officers on the scene. The second incident, our officers were dispatched to a residence to assist with a juvenile who was in crisis. The juvenile was hitting, punching, and kicking, and biting his parents, who were attempting to restrain him. The juvenile successfully punched his mother in the face, so our officers, in order to make sure that nobody else was injured, did restrain the juvenile's arms down to the ground. They held him there until EMS arrived to be able to transport the juvenile. He did attempt to resist and regain control with the officers, to strike the officers, but was never successful. Again, no injuries reported by the individual or the officers on scene. And lastly, our officers were dispatched to an intoxicated male who was laying in the middle of the township street. The officers attempted to verbally de-escalate the male on two occasions and encouraged him to stay inside his home. On a third occasion, he did leave his residence again and went on to a neighbor's property, and our officers were summoned, again, a third time to deal with this individual. At that point, they determined that he was a danger to himself and others, intended to take him into custody by handcuffing him behind his back. He did resist, so our officers had to control both of his arms and control them back behind his back to successfully handcuff him as well. He did resist also back here at our station, officers attempted to put a leg shackle on him while they typed charges, and he was resisting them there as well. There were no injuries, though, for that incident, the male eventually was under control, and the officers also did not report any injuries. Community Relations, Officer Sunderland installed two child safety seats for a township resident. Officer Schaefer, Officer McCaslin, and Officer Kaufman participated in the torch run. And if you don't know what a torch run is, it's to start off Special Olympics here in State College. So, we've participated in this for as long as I've been here, for over 20 years, but the torch begins its journey at home plate at PNC Park in Pittsburgh, and travels the 150 miles here to State College, and law enforcement officers volunteer to run about four-to-six mile legs. I always think the guys are crazy, but Officer McCaslin ran the leg coming up Skytop Mountain this year, that's a big, big hill. So, they did a fantastic job, and we really love being a part of that event and that organization, so. I mentioned this before, a few days before the event, but many of our officers were involved in the law enforcement memorial service. I read names of the fallen officers, Officer Schaefer participated in the rifle team, and then, kind of somewhat selfishly, my daughter is in the confirmation class for the St. John Lutheran Church in Bellefonte, and so I brought their confirmation class down, allowed them to tour the station, see, meet a couple officers, look through the cars, but then the message was, and kind of the lesson was, how police interact with the community and how we help the community. So, it was very well received, and they really enjoyed that, so. And then Officer Snyder, and, I'm sorry, Detective Snyder and Officer Tuskovich presented about the tactical response team to the students at CPI. Busy month for training and department activities, our officers attended tactical response team training, all of our officers received yearly update training on first aid CPR and our AEDs. They also received training on use of force and a presentation from the Children's Advocacy Center. Sergeant Shepanko attended training on improvised explosives. Officer Vardzel attended pedestrian and bicycle crash investigation training. Officer McElrath attended the Pennsylvania Gang Conference, and Officer McCaslin and Officer Kaufman attended Rescue Task Force and active shooter training as well. All of our officers completed their MOPAC, required yearly qualifications for their handgun, shotgun, and patrol rifles that we carry. Critical department policies are also reviewed yearly, so I have a list in here, our officers who were tested in the following areas: use of force, deadly force, less lethal force in weapons, duty to intervene, de-escalation, pursuit, mental health, bias-based policing, special stopping techniques, vehicle immobilization tactics, and also temporary holding rooms. So, we review those policies on a yearly basis, it's required for accreditation that we review those, so. I attended the Center Region Emergency Services Meeting, the Center County Law Enforcement Memorial Service, Center County Chiefs of Police Meeting, Children's Advocacy Center Advisory Committee Meeting, Happy Valley Business Association Lunch, and I also assisted Spring Township Police Department as they were interviewing for a promotion for the rank of sergeant. Included a picture of our officers running the torch run, this is the easier of the two legs, this is them on North Atherton Street, so they just came from Valley Vista Sheetz there and run down to the Lion Shrine, so. Got a letter from Chief Weaver, the chief of Bellefonte Borough Police Department. This year, MOPAC required a certain use of force train, and they don't have a use of force instructor to be able to provide that training, so we loaned out Sergeant Stroud and trained up the Bellefonte officers as well on the required training, so he was just appreciating the time, and, again, the cooperation we have in law enforcement is spectacular in Center County. Couple of performance reports, very proud of the officers for whenever one of these comes across my desk. Officer Kaufman, Officer Wolfinger, on May 1st responded to a residence in Patent Township for a report of a male in cardiac arrest. Upon arrival, the officers conducted an assessment and determined that the patient was not breathing and had no pulse. Officer Wolfinger began chest compressions while Officer Kaufman attached the AED to the patient, which delivered two shocks. In the meantime, the two officers continued giving chest compressions and rescue breaths until the patient, to the patient until they relieved by EMS. The patient eventually regained pulse, a pulse at the scene, and was transported to Mountain Epi Medical Center for more advanced care. The following day, upon checking in, he was still being treated in the intensive care unit. So, it was due to the quick actions of Officer Kaufman and Officer Wolfinger that a patient in cardiac arrest was revived and able to be transported for more advanced care. So, very happy with the outcome of that incident. And then on May 11th, Officer Suho responded to the Olive Garden Restaurant for a report of a female choking on food. The patient could not speak or breathe, and her lips were beginning to turn blue. Officer Suho arrived, and the patient was found that she was still choking. He immediately began first aid, administering a series of back blows and abdominal thrusts, also known as the Heimlich maneuver, obviously. This partially dislodged the obstruction, and the patient was able to exchange some air then. EMS arrived on scene and took over care of the patient and transported her to Mountain Epi Medical Center for more care. But again, it was due to the quick actions, quick response of Officer Suho, that a life-threatening choking incident was stopped, and the patient was able to be transported for more advanced care. So, very, very proud of those three officers for those two incidents we had. One letter I received, this is actually the day after the event, the event in Texas, and I wanted to read it, very touching, but also a testament to the hard work our officers do out in the community. The person wrote, "This morning, I had the hard task of explaining the events in Texas to my fourth-grade son. He cried and cried, he was angry and afraid. We prayed for everyone involved, we prayed for your staff, our school staff, and the kids that entered the doors. We traveled to school feeling uneasy, and when we arrived, we saw a patrol car, a parked patrol car, and an officer at the door. My fourth and first-grade sons were able to walk in bravely with less fear, knowing this officer was there to remind them of the good in our world, and I thank you for making their hearts and minds a priority." So, I really appreciated that note, and again, just appreciate the officers being out there and being present. Lastly, our record list of calls, the month of May, we had 443 calls for service, that's up from the 432 that we had in April. We had 51 traffic and 51 health and safety EMS assists. We also had, of note, 41 ordinance violations, most of those were for grass violations, so just to remind everybody, cannot exceed a maximum of six inches, or else the ordinance enforcement officer will probably visit you and make sure that you're getting your grass cut, so. Other than that, that's all I have, and happy to answer your questions.
We do issue warnings.
We do issue a warning first, and give you 72 hours to get in compliance, and he'll come back through and check, and we try to work with folks, we're looking for compliance, we're not looking to cite anybody. We can get ahold of somebody, and, you know, they can say, hey, it rained yesterday, I'm going to do it tomorrow, we're flexible, so.
Is there any supervisor that has a question for Chief at this time?
I do have a quick question. Are the, the grass violations, are they something that your officers or the ordinance officer notices, or is it usually a call?
So, our ordinance enforcement officer probably identifies about 80 to 90% of the violations, so he's just him out and about, checking, checking on properties. We do receive some calls here and there from folks, yeah.
I'll chime in, I know from more than 20 years of experience of riding around and looking at, that there are some people who will not cut their grass until we kill them too. So, we go through this every spring.
Okay, Supervisor Torino?
Makes sense.
No question, but Madam Chair, may I request, please request a recess, a short recess.
You can have a recess, thank you, be back in five minutes.
Okay, everyone, we're getting ready to go back on line.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Let's continue. Next on the agenda is Public Works Operations Bid Award for 2022 Township Street Overlay Contract. Director of Public Works, Mr. Dickens. Ken?
On June 7th at 2:00 in the afternoon, the township did open our overlay contract bids. Glenel Hawbaker is the low bidder. And I do recommend that we accept their bid for our overlay contract this year. As you can see, the bids were fairly volatile, and that represents the market we're in right now. So, and if you recall, we did reduce the lineal footage of roads that we are repairing to keep it within the budget.
Some of those, Madam Chair, approval of the low bidder.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, next on the agenda is Engineering Planning and zoning. Planning Commissioner report. Planning Commission did not meet in June, so we're moving on. Okay. Moving on. Next on the agenda.
Six B.
Thank you. Is the fee change for zoning and hearing board applications. And that is Alex.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
At the May 25th meeting, the board directed staff to prepare a resolution to increase the fees and require the deposit of $1,500 for zoning hearing board applications. The proposed fee change notes that unused funds from the deposit will be returned to the applicant. Within the meeting, within the agenda materials, you will see Resolution 2022-12, which is for your consideration this evening and vote. Thank you.
Okay. So do we have to vote on this?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, I move, I move the, oh, go ahead, Betsy.
Betsy?
I'll, I'll move the acceptance of the revised zoning hearing board fees.
Okay, can I get a second? Second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is zoning hearing board grant, the de minimis variance.
Yes.
That's you again, Alex.
On May 12th, the zoning hearing board took testimony from a homeowner in Timberton Circle and the township zoning officer regarding a request of variance to permit the expansion of a residential garage into the front yard setback. The homeowner presented a letter of approval from the Timberton HOA, and no other property owners provided written comments or attended the hearing. The zoning hearing board reconvened and took action to approve a de minimis setback variance for the proposed garage. Because it was 8.9%, less than 10%, it was de minimis. So this item is for information only, and there's no, no vote required.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Administration Board Import for 2023 to 2027 Capital Improvement Plan. Doug?
Yep, so we, as we have for the last several years, we start this process of updating our capital improvement plan by coming to the board of supervisors and asking for your suggestions. We'll be back in July again and, and in August, asking again. Just to update everyone, that we, I did provide a list of things we had talked about last year. These came up when we were talking about American Rescue Plan money. These will all be incorporated into the CIP going forward. If there are other suggestions, I encourage board members to come talk to me or, or Alex, and, and we can help them frame, frame a project and, and get some cost estimates put together for that. At this point, there's no formal action that's required. Again, if you'd like more background, I can give you more background on CIP process, but with not, we'll move on.
Okay. Moving on, next on the agenda is the Audit, Audited Financial Statements for 2020, and this is the Director of Finance, Larry Paylor. Larry?
Yeah, they're actually the audited financial statements for 2021.
Oh. Sorry about that.
That's okay. It's not saying 2021 in, in narrative. It says that you're going to receive a brief presentation, but, you know, maybe it won't be as brief because it's pretty exciting to me. I'm sure it's exciting to everybody.
Motion to, to expedite.
So, the, the final financial statements was included with the agenda, it's 61 pages. I will not go through all 61 pages.
Thank you.
The, the first three pages is the auditor's report. This auditor's report is what's known as an unqualified or clean opinion. And what unqualified means is that when they conducted their audit, they did not find anything that would misrepresent the financial position of the township. So, it is unqualified. Had it been qualified, they would have stated what they found in their audit that could cause a misrepresentation of the financial position of the township. So those are the first three pages. Next pages, pages four through 16 are managements, which is, which is Doug. Management, Doug and I worked together on the MDNA, the management discussion and analysis. And this is the highlights of the financial statement. So this is the Sports Center on ESPN of what's happening in this financial statement. So, just looking through those pages, it, it hits all the highlights that are in the other 45 pages. Just a few of the highlights of the highlights is that the fund balance increased to about $898,500 from last year. In 2020, it was $659,000. Of the 898, 815 is unassigned, and that represents 6.9% of our general fund expenditures. We generally like that number to be between 8 and 12%. However, it's a little bit low because, you know, coming back from the pandemic, so we're rebuilding that up. The next things that I, I like to look at is the source of revenues. Obviously, our greatest amount of revenue comes from my real estate taxes and our income taxes. They, they generate, that's the gold in that pie chart, so they generate a good, you know, 70% of our revenues. The other big number on our financial is our debt. As you know, we, we borrowed back a few years ago, we borrowed close to $10 million. We're paying that down every year. However, in 2021, our debt had increased the $1,837,500 that we borrowed in the PIV loan for the intersection of Fox Hill and Burnell. So, and the final thing is, it tells you on, on page 16 that if you have any questions, to direct them to the Finance Director. The next pages, from page 17 through 25, is the actual financial statements. So they would go through the balance sheet, followed by the statement of financial position, which is, in our case, the statement of activities, which is like the income statement, that's the difference between the revenues and the expenditures. And if you go down a little bit, you'll see that this report here has the major funds and the assets and liabilities, the balance sheet broken out into the funds. So it basically handles the inflow and outflow of the cash through our various funds. The last, from page 26 to page 61, is the notes to the financial statements, and these are explanations of some of the numbers that are in the financial statements. What, how we come, how we come up with the long-term debt, how much, how much did we start the year with, what did we pay down, what did we borrow, those types of things. And we'll talk about the different funds and what the different funds are, the liquid fuels fund versus the general fund. So all of the different policies and procedures that we use in the finance department will all be spelled out in the notes, the financial statements. Other than that, I'll accept any questions on the financial statements, which I'm sure you all understood.
Okay, is there any questions for Larry at this time from any of the supervisors?
I just want to say thank you.
Supervisor Whitman?
Yeah, I'm just really glad to have you back in the room, Larry. Your excitement is just overflowing.
Thank you, thank you.
And, and too. I don't think I've said that properly. It's great to have the full, full suite here.
And if there's any questions that you want to get to me, or we need to have the auditors address anything, we certainly have to do that.
What I'm also hearing, supervisor McGroonan? What I'm also hearing too is that there's going to be no embezzlement.
No, there's no, there's, there's, they, they rolled that out, the auditors.
We have, we have tight internal controls.
We have tight internal controls. We're, we're really sticklers on, on, you know, the banks know, know who can sign a check, where they can sign a check, and who could open or close a checking account, which is probably the most important thing when it comes to embezzling, usually it's somebody that opens an account in their own name and deposits money directly.
Every online transaction takes two people to.
Yes.
To make it happen, so.
Right, I cannot initiate an online transaction and approve that, and approve that transaction. Doug would have to approve anything that I initiate.
Doug doesn't get to initiate anything, he only gets to approve every once in a while.
That's right.
When Larry's not available. What do I get to do?
Thank you for the education. Larry, thank you again. Moving on, next on the, on the agenda, since we moved it forward, was the request for the resolution for support of the House bill. Since we've already done that, we're moving on. Next on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Doug?
Four items, there's a grant application that's pending, needs to be submitted by the end of the month, minutes from the May 25th meeting, the May 2022 voucher report, and IRS has increased the mileage allowance starting in July, so we need to approve that change for mileage reimbursement for travel related to township business.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on, next on the agenda is the manager's report. Doug, again?
Just to give you a real brief update on the Gaynor Parklet encroachment, we did have the, inspection was completed on May 30th, and we got the report about a week later. As expected, none of the equipment that's in that in place meets current safety standards, so we still have the signs in place. We've had to replace them a couple of times, but they seem to be staying more than leaving at this point. Recreation Advisory Committee will undertake a review of all that at their meeting next week on June 21st. Under correspondence, start off with, the first item I had was a notice or an email that came from the DEP. Let me see, I'm trying to pull something else up on my computer while I talk, I can't do two things at once. So, the, yeah. There was a notice from DEP about the PFAS groundwater, emerging groundwater issue in Benner Township. Did receive another press release from DEP today that there's going to be a public hearing regarding this on June 28th at 6:30 PM in the Benner Township Municipal Building. So, we have a mailing list of people we've been keeping informed about this in Patton Township, we'll send that notice out to them here later this week or beginning of next week. There was another notice that came across my desk from the State College Borough Water Authority, just to give you a little background on what they have, what they go through, this is their notice, this notice of application to the Susquehanna River Basin Commission. So, any changes that State College Borough Water Authority makes sure their withdrawals from groundwater needs to go through an approval process, that's at the Susquehanna River Basin Commission, which is a agency of the state government that regulates groundwater withdrawals, large groundwater withdrawals around the state. Are we in separate, they're separate commissions based on the watersheds too. There was also some information there on the Atherton Street Traffic Signal Upgrade Project that's moving forward a little slowly right now, but I think we're still trying to, this that project that Pendott asked us to sponsor the grant, they're doing the lion's, lion's, lion's share of the work. They're moving forward. Just update, if anybody's wondering, announcements, Center County is monitoring mosquito issues in Grayswoods, Marysville, Toftrees, and now Park Forest, and they are trapping and analyzing and seeing, and they will treat as warranted. They have sprayed out in the Brenwood and Marysville area at least twice. Do they spray here in streets too, or?
I don't know whether they spray.
Yeah, no, they, they're, they're checking quite frequently out there, they just, I think they just did it last week in Brenwood. I'm surprised that they didn't do it around you, but, so, that's ongoing. Our website, Larry and three other staff members have been in two days of training, they have one more day of training tomorrow on managing our website, so we're still, at this point, scheduled to go live in late June. I just left it as late June because I didn't want to. We, we have a date, but I'm just keeping it under, under wraps at the moment.
Yeah, we may have to, we may have to postpone that date depending on what.
Okay, yeah, we, we found, the, the company didn't port over all the pages from our old website to the new one like they were supposed to, so Sophie Weston identified that, she's been on them, making sure they get all that work done that they said they were going to do, so. Upcoming events, Township, the next closure of the Township office is for July 4th, Independence Day. Note that on June 16th, which is tomorrow, there's a Scotia Bike Road Bike Pedestrian Con Activity Study Alternatives presentation will take place in this room, 5:30 to 7:00. They have identified three alternatives to connect Circleville Bike Way with the Grayswoods Bike Way, so we're looking for input on that. If you're interested, please attend that, provide comments, or reach out to Susan Wheeler if you'd like to comment without going to the meeting. Noted previously, the Community Diversity Conference is on the 21st. Just keep, save the date, October 6th to 9th is PML's annual summit. I reached out this week to folks, we should be making hotel reservations here by the end of the month, so I'll, I'll keep working on that. And PSATs will have a regional conference in Bollesburg in October, and that's the end of my report.
Okay. Moving right along, is the committee reports, if there are any supervisors who would like to add to their committee report at this time? Supervisor McGroonan?
Yeah, so the Human Resources Committee met on June 1st, and I hope I'm accurate in representing what, what occurred there, but, you know, we were being asked to consider, you know, cost of, among other things, cost of living adjustments, you know, for the COG staff, and they had developed some formula, but basically what they were proposing was, you know, 2.3% with a 1.5 merit increase. And what this recommendation was going to do was then kick it over to the Finance Committee, I believe, and they would then, you know, make their assessments, and so there wasn't anything binding, just a recommendation. We were informed that any, I think it was with COLA, if it went beyond 5%, if we had that recommendation, it would actually need to be kicked then to the General Forum for a larger vote. And so to avoid that, which would delay things, I think it was proposed to just have the COLA at 5%. I did vote against that, and, one, it just felt arbitrary to me, two, in considering, cost of living I get and, and wanting to make sure we're having, you know, competitive salaries as well, and making sure that, you know, the COG staff are compensated, seeing as it seems like, based in comparison to the other municipalities, they sort of fare lower in compensation. And so I was sensitive to that, and, and not knowing what our employees here in Patton Township would actually be getting, I would not want to set up a scenario where voting for, you know, the COG to have, you know, this astronomical number while yet suppressing, you know, what we, we pay to our, our employees here in Patton Township, so I did vote against that. But again, this is just a recommendation that was approved, the 5% COLA, it's being kicked to the Finance Committee, and we'll, we'll bring it back to a vote later on at some point. And again, this was all for the 2023 budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that, does that sound accurate? What I said?
Supervisor Trupina?
You're referring, referencing to Patton Township COLA for 2023, we haven't decided on one yet, have we? No, it's, it's, it's generated by the CPI at the end of August.
End of August.
So we have to wait until the end of August, until we even have that number, and then we have to discuss, because I'm not sure what that number's going to be, is that number going to be in excess of 8%? And how are we going to absorb that if we decide to continue with that policy?
So, but my, obviously, we're, we will take this up in Finance in July, we, our June meeting was actually canceled, so it takes months. But past year, in past years, did COG decide on a COLA before the end of August?
So COG's policy for their COLA is an average of the CPIs during the year. Okay? So, they, I think they're looking at it this year that it will be in excess of 5 when they average the entire year, and therefore, they're safe to say, we're going to do 5, because they're afraid probably that we're not going, as the Finance Committee doing the budget, we're not going to take something in excess of 8%. Because that's really going to put a burden on the municipalities. But I'm not sure why they're coming out with it now, usually you're right, they wouldn't come out with that number until right before they finish the budget.
Okay, thank you, I need that information before I represent us.
Okay.
At the Finance Committee meeting. So, Sutan, you're, you're, you're voting, you voted against the 5% COLA recommendation because you wanted more information about what the Township COLA is going to be, is that the gist of it?
Yeah, that, that was the, the gist of it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, on Public Safety, we just met yesterday, so I'll have my report at our next board meeting. Supervisor Whitman? Okay, moving on, next on the agenda is other business. Doug, is there any other business?
No, ma'am.
Okay, is there any supervisor, are there any other business? All right. See, none chief, I just have one question before we adjourn. Could you give the non-emergency number, since we're going into the 4th of July? I am expecting, since they're not going to have a lot of fireworks going on, that in case we, our residence should be bombarded by amateur firework people? Can you give the non-emergency number that they can call?
Yep, so the non-emergency number here in Center County actually rings directly into the 911 center, it just does not tie up a 911 line, is 1-800-479-0050.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone, this meeting is now adjourned.